Meeting for the Caldwell City Council, City of Caldwell, Texas is now called to order. Today's date is Tuesday, August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. A quorum is present, so we will proceed. The invocation will be led by Alan Willis. And the pledge to the American and Texas flags will be led by a U.S. Army veteran, Tony Zepin.
Well, I want to thank those friends we have to meet tonight. He was a sixth in those good old love ones recently. For sure, we want you to always be with our city, all our employees, all of our citizens. And for sure, let us have a safe trip home tonight. Thank you for all the blessing and Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Do we have any citizens to be heard on agenda items? Do we have any citizens on city-related topics? Item on the agenda consists of the minutes from the last meeting and some additional considerations.
I move we accept the consent agenda items as presented.
We have a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda. Do we have a second? All in favor of accepting the items on the consent agenda, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a public hearing on the proposed twenty-twenty-two property tax rate.
To start our public hearing, I'll just put out there, probably seen in the paper, we discussed it already, proposed tax rate being staying the same that has been several years past. It was three-seven-nine-five-seven for a hundred-dollar valuation. Well, if there's any time for public comments.
Any public comment on the proposed twenty-twenty-two property tax rate? Do I have to wait a certain amount of time or no comment? Are they ready to respond now we can move on? Okay, moving to regular agenda items. We have discussion and possible action on approving the city budget for fiscal year October first, twenty-twenty-two through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three.
So this budget, there's been no changes from, you know, the workshop that we had. It ends up being, you guys could have it in your packets. Overall, a little bit over an eighteen-million-dollar budget. Now this, as we talked about in the workshop, will include the tax rate that we just discussed. It also has the rate increases for wastewater sanitation and electric fund. So just a recap of that. Well, I'll take kind of how we do that first. We'll bring back an ordinance next month. Because what we want to do is instead of, right now, all of our fees are spread out through the different places in ordinance. But we want to pull those back out and develop a fee schedule where everything says, okay, well, the electric rates see table whatever. So it'll come back in that form. But just as a reminder, what we've done on the electricity is a one cent per kilowatt-hour increase. And that's primarily to cover the increase in wholesale costs. We still continue to try to find that optimal spot to get a new wholesale agreement. But natural gas is over nine dollars today. You know, so it continues to fluctuate highly. We're looking at a contract from January moving forward, just kind of see what prices we can get. So that would be across the board. It would kind of vary because we've got different tiered rates. The wastewater increase that we're looking at, basically two dollars per meter or per connection, if you would. So there's a, right now, that fee is seventeen fifty, it would go up to nineteen fifty. And the volume metric fee would go up to approximately fifty cents per, well, it's more than that. Right now, it's a dollar, dollar seventy-six per thousand gallons we, but most of that residential is capped, right? So most people use six thousand gallons or so. And we do that over those winter weighted months. So basically, December, January, February, we take an average over those months. And that's what you're going to do year-round. The rate will go from one-seventy-six to two-forty-nine on residential. So basically, both those two, well, the electric fund was approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's what we needed to make up on that, just explains that rate increase. And on the wastewater side, a little over a hundred thousand dollars that we needed to cover extra costs. It's just added costs of doing business now, you know, between fuel and everything else that we've got that has increased chemicals on the wastewater side. Sanitation rate is a, we need to increase that. Our revenue is about forty thousand dollars to make ends meet. So that increase is two dollars and two cents per month, making our monthly fee sixteen oh three. And that's just for residential only, we adjusted commercially a year or two ago. But, and that's, that's all fuel. It is where that gets eaten up. But anyway, that's kind of a recap on where we are with the budget that's presented with Friday today. I'm happy to answer any questions if y'all have any.
Any conversation about the budget? Do we have a motion to approve the city budget for the fiscal year October one, twenty-twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three? Do we have a second on the motion? All in favor of approving the city budget for the fiscal year October one, twenty-twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three? Raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on the ordinance setting the twenty-twenty-two property tax rate.
So our last meeting, we set the proposed tax rate, like I said, at point three-seven-nine-five-seven. The budget, especially for the hero fund, is based off of that. So staff would recommend we set the tax rate at more of a tax rate at point three-seven-nine-five-seven for a hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor of setting the twenty-twenty-two property tax rate at point three-seven-nine-five-seven? Raise your right hand. And then opposed, motion passes. The next item is discussion and possible action on resolution number twenty-eight dash sixteen dash twenty-two to adopt and allocate funds for an outdoor fitness court to be located at Davidson Creek Park.
So this resolution, we had talked about this before. So this fitness court, I think we looked at in a workshop, we looked at it real quick. It's really a neat program. The fitness court itself would be placed out on that slab that's right next to the ponds at Davidson Creek Park, between the ponds and the gazebo. And it provides all kind of different fitness exercises for folks to come use. We applied for and actually received a fifty-thousand-dollar grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So it takes the cost for the city down significantly. So I think our overall cost for that's going to be about a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. If y'all move to go ahead and move forward with that, that money would come and we're, we're driving along to where we can probably get this done or at least get everything in the motions before the end of this fiscal year. So what we're looking for is for y'all to act on this, this resolution. The fund would actually be coming from capital funds that we have budgeted currently for this year. Our street projects that we did came in a little bit under what we budgeted. So it left just about that amount of money for, for this project. And we didn't know it would be for this project, but it seems to fit really well with kind of our comprehensive plan and what we're trying to do for our citizens. If you don't remember from the budget last year, we allowed in about four-hundred thousand dollars for street reconstruction. Our bids came in at two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. So we've got right about that money left from our budget this year to cover this if the council chooses to do so. There is, this should be fully upfront, that we believe that slab will work just fine for it. We're having our engineer make sure it meets the specs that they call for for this fitness court. And I should also tell you that that, that extra one-hundred-and-thirteen-hundred, fifteen thousand, that includes them coming out and putting everything together for it. So it'll be professionally installed and there are various different warranties on it. But I think it looks great. I think it'd be a great asset to, to the city. But I'm happy to answer any questions on that. I think timeline for this, if y'all pass this resolution, we'll kind of, we'll get that back to them. And by passing this resolution, y'all are approving the funding as well. We would issue a PO and they would be shipping equipment hopefully sometime in September. And as soon as we figure out the slab details, if that works, then we'll be rocking and rolling and getting it put together. But any questions, I'm happy to answer them, that way we all.
Do you know if that slab isn't sufficient, do you know?
I think they've ballparked about twenty thousand dollars for a slab. I think that's probably a little light and that may change the way we, we look at this project. What was it, you remember, was it twenty by thirty?
Slab was a roller, hot, freak at first. It's only twenty square meters.
It has to do with the slope that they were looking for. Preliminary comments from our engineering teams, they think it's going to be fine. But I just want to put that on the table so there's.
So it's on six hundred.
I'd have to go back.
Twenty by thirty, it's small.
It might have been larger than that. Do you have any other to do?
Where would be the alternate spots for pretty good?
I think that's the ideal spot, push it right there. And we have to look at whether we break that up in the report or add a cost. But I think if we get to that point, I would certainly bring that back to y'all.
But the engineers can also possibly, they could use that distance, they could possibly use just four years if you don't have.
It's a hundred and sixty feet by eight-four feet.
That's the slab. I think they're asking about what the fitness court, how much space that would take up. Starts tall.
For those of you not familiar, a fitness court has about twelve stations. About, it's very colorful. It's, I don't know how to describe it. I just think it's, lots of people work out at Davidson Creek Park. Lots of people work under the pavilion, it's just something extra for.
Is it an obstacle course?
No, it's kind of.
Stations, it's stations.
They've got boxes, if you're going to do kind of box drills, they've got cables hanging down where you can do all kind of different exercises. The fitness court itself, an app comes along with it, so you can basically have a personal trainer for that, whatever exercises that you're wanting to do.
I think I might get that on the city workshop.
I don't know. Really, I wonder if we could.
I'm looking for the information about it.
That would have been in.
There we go.
Everything moved really quickly with it. I'm not used to government work like that.
It's for adults or anybody not home school, schools to necessarily.
No, 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 this isn't.
It, it don't have like an app that you can download with.
So maybe there's a good picture of it. Yeah, so further down here, when they called that out as far as the, the cost of the slab.
It never price.
Anyway, I just think it's an asset for the park.
I think it's great, there's so many people that work out down there already and it'd be a tieback to the trade.
Well, I think that, well, that's the first thing you say when you pull down there.
It's colored, it's just so absent.
Yeah, yeah. It looks like there's something supposed to be there.
Exactly. So do we have a motion to adopt and allocate funds for the outdoor fitness court to be located at Davidson Creek Park? Do we have a second? All in favor of adopting and allocating funds for the outdoor fitness park at Davidson Creek Park? Raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. Next is discussion and possible action on awarding hot funds. And there's three, actually four, Burleson County Youth Development, Burleson County Saddle Club, and two with Friends of Caldwell Main Street.
So last week, we brought these two on the workshop or not?
Workshop.
Workshop. Oh, you're saying workshop, sorry. And so the Burleson County Youth Development Incorporated, y'all are going to reimburse them through hot funds, virtual two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixteen cents. So this contract will basically set the money where they will submit their post of report and then they reimburse their check will be.
So we discussed it and then vote, agreed upon an award last week. So do we have a motion to award Burleson County Youth Development Club two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixteen cents in hot funds?
I'll move.
Do you have a second? Okay, motion, all in favor of awarding Burleson County Youth Development two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixteen cents. Raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. The next one is Burleson County Saddle Club.
So this one is for the Burleson County Saddle Club. And they requested an amount that was discretionary to the council. The council chose to reimburse them based on their advertising and other costs for tourism promotion, which totaled four thousand and thirty-six dollars.
Again.
Youth rodeo series, so.
That brought in seven-hundred-and-fifty, is that the one? To the community. So per discussion last week, we settled on four thousand thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents for Burleson County Saddle Club. Do we have a motion to award them four thousand thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents in hot funds? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion to award them four thousand thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Do we have, all of those in favor of awarding that? Raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. Next is Friends of Caldwell Main Street.
So this one is for the summer concert series, the three concerts, June, July, and August. The Friends was requesting a full amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars. And the council chose to do fifty percent of that at fourteen thousand dollars.
Any additional discussion on that? So do we have a motion to award Friends of Caldwell Main Street fourteen thousand dollars in hot funds?
I'll move.
Do we have a second? All those in favor of awarding Friends of Caldwell Main Street fourteen thousand dollars in hot funds? Raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. And finally, another Friends of Caldwell Main Street.
This one is for requesting reimbursement from the second mural, which is located at the corner of Bud and Dean Street. And an amount of five thousand dollars, which would be reimbursing the Friends for their contributions to helping the remaining five thousand dollars for the mural cost.
Okay, we have a motion to award Friends of Caldwell Main Street five thousand dollars in hot funds. Do we have a second? All those in favor of awarding Friends of Caldwell Main Street five thousand dollars in hot funds? Please raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. Next, discussion and possible action on authorization to pursue an RFQ, request for qualifications for a grant administrator for the twenty-twenty-two Resilient Committees Grant Program through the Texas General Land Office in regards to zoning ordinance.
So ironically, we've been talking about zoning and talking about how we're going to go about accomplishing school zoning ordinance. And our attorneys forwarded a mail that had information about this, the ZA community grant program through the GLO that recently began awarding in June of this year. And so the grant is for communities that are wanting to implement zoning ordinance or other ordinances that are related to improving resiliency in communities. And it has to have, the community in order to be eligible, has to have a comprehensive plan that's been adopted within the past five years. And then the other piece would be a city tribal county or cog entity and have the ability to adopt any kind of ordinance or regulation. So the grant is for an amount of three hundred thousand dollars. By us being able to go out for a grant administrator, RFQ, that would allow us to start that process. And then the grant administrator would help us through the process of actually making the application. Kind of the stipulation with this is that we would have twelve months from the time that the grant is awarded to produce a draft ordinance and adopt it. So it would be a quick turnaround and that's something that we as staff don't feel like we have the capacity to handle to get, or to meet the qualifications to get the grant completely. So that's why we want to go out for a grant administrator and then bring that forward as we move through that process and also choose. Basically, the zoning ordinance would not be the only thing that we would propose in the proposal. We would try to also update the building regulations chapter and then also the floodplain intervention ordinance, just to make sure that those are all updated. Because the amount of money that is being offered to this grant program would definitely allow us to update all of those ordinances and reset for the future pretty well off. So. Any questions?
So grant administrator, I don't want to say they write the grant, they just.
They administer the grant through, like, as we go through the process, they would handle the application and then taking care of all of the submitted that we have to meet for the deadlines and things like that. So we'll bring forward resolutions to y'all to approve for different processes during the grant process. This grant is a refund, so we have to meet three different, basically, performances that we would submit a draft and then they would review the draft and then we would go to the next iterative process. And they take forward a, I guess, a resolution and then the actual adoption of it. So it's kind of a three-step process and that's where the grant administrator will come in and handle those pieces to make sure we have all of our I and D's in these contracts.
Do you have to skip more money?
So what was it, twelve months? So once we do this, we have to have the zoning in place in twelve months?
So we have the ordinance drafted and adopted in twelve months. And that's why we want to have a grant administrator to help make sure that we stay within that time.
What would be the timeline between starting?
Starting, so if we were able to go for RFQ, I would say we would be able to have a grant administrator selected within a month and a half. And then after that, we would begin the process to make the grant application, which would probably be another month. And then potentially by the beginning of the year, we could actually submit that and potentially start going out.
Yeah, depending on how quickly they, if we get a word, have a video award that.
Yeah, so we would actually, yeah, we would pay for that in three different amounts. So it would be, when we have to meet those criterias, we would go ahead and pay for everything. And then once they check that box for that criteria, we'd get a third of the cost back throughout the twelve months.
Do we have a motion to authorize Forest to pursue an RFQ for a grant administrator for the twenty-twenty-two Resilient Committees Grant Program through the Texas GLO in regards to zoning ordinance?
Motion.
Do we have a second? All those in favor of awarding, granting Forest the authorization to pursue an RFQ for a grant administrator for the tech, for the twenty-twenty-two Resilient Committees Grant Program through the Texas GLO in regards to zoning ordinance? Raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. Final items on the agenda are the department and community reports. Is there any discussion to be had or questions asked concerning these reports?
Does the city make a new thing or is that something that I, we just had missed over the year?
No, it's going to do, okay, but it is, our department heads have received credit cards. And as we work through the process to make that more efficient, we'll take your steps in changing our process. So probably the new for six time or time for that.
I'm having fun with the credit card.
Do you have any questions or concerns, discussion about those reports? Benji, thank you for the house over there by Walmart. Said we're going to, when the weather gets cooler, we're going to tear it down, that's fantastic news. Okay, the first cool front that blows in, I'm going to need you standing there. Thank you for all your hard work on that, it's a lot of things I know you get turned in. Any discussion, guys? Now we will hear from our administrative team, Camden White, city administrator.
I don't have much to say, we're working on, but it's nonstop, I'm sick of it. I need to hear any questions, y'all want updates on particular.
City hall, anything, dude.
We're still waiting, we had an engineering team out there to kind of go through and. We're still waiting, we had an engineering team out there to kind of go through and go up some different testing and we can have whatever, we'll back on that. So we're continuing to work with our legal team on that, through that process.
Any housing development updates, businesses moving in, nothing like that? Okay. Not at this time.
There's a lot of discussion around stuff, but nothing that's burned up. Can I throw up there?
Okay, Forrest Williams.
Sorry, before you're done, there was open four hundred participants this year, and the staff at the library had a lot of hard work and a lot of time to get through it. So just thank them for all their efforts. Our concert series was done, but we got collage festivals.
Melissa, no, we're not. Any individual councilman, Mr. Ricky, Mr. Arlenstein today? Mr. McCollum?
Just leaving.
Mr. Melvett?
Yeah, we had a church function down in the lot behind, on the Friday. Somebody pointed out a big tree in the cemetery that had fallen down. Okay, I don't know if that's our. Yeah, it's a big old tree, I know that.
It's a little cooler, it's not really bothering, but yes, it's a big one.
Okay, thank you, I'll pass that on, let them know where, where it is, and we'll take care of it. And then there's a couple of potholes right at, when you drive out of our, the church at the back part, where the back entrances, there's a couple of potholes, I don't know. The city went up and they filled some potholes, but they missed a couple there. It's right, it's right at the edge of the street and the, and the driveway.
Yeah, I'd probably make the job order on it.
Okay. And then, is it?
Mr. Wild. My real job, CHS, cat fleet instruction started today. So I was excited to see the gentleman walk in, they do a two-hour course. Some young gentlemen were interviewed in the spring, and they had qualified to start the class. And so the instructor is very excited, complimentary of the students. So cat fleet is rolling, ready to do business one day. And special thanks to everybody who helped, especially to the city workers who helped with the concert. It's a Friday and Saturday job and very much appreciated. And electrical department, the guys that helped set up and clean up. We've got it down to a good system, and it was a great time. We had a great time at all three concerts. Lots of positive feedback and very thankful for the city for their support with that. And the fitness court is thirty-eight by thirty-eight, traditional. All right.
I almost forgot to remind me, I don't know if anybody else has been to the park, we've got a fountain pushing water.
Yes, yes.
We're going to look at, we're going to look at getting the others repaired and if not, we may look at purchasing some new ones.
Awesome. Anything else?
All the, all the systems holding up okay? Water system, water wells? I mean, my pressure, my house has been fine, so.
No, we're still, I see our, our water wastewater crews are running on auto brakes and stuff like that, so they're, they're about run raggy, but I appreciate the work that they do. Just keep going.
Did, do you have any upset citizens about the utility bill? Anybody making noise up here? One or two?
Quite a few.
Quite a few? Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn this funding? Do we have a second? Yes.